Like to call this meeting to order? I guess, okay. Would you please all rise? Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a lot of people. That's cool. Okay, everyone is here this evening? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
By Jonathan. Second?
Second.
Stacy? Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. I'll move on to the truth in taxation portion of our meeting and the presentation by Julie Sink.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Stallow, Board Chair at Shimick. Tonight, we're going to, as we do every time in December, we're going to talk a little bit about our truth in taxation, which includes several different items. Let me get to where I need to go here. What we're going to talk about as part of it is our tax levy calendar. We're going to talk about our basic school funding, some factors contributing to any changes in our levy, and the levy certification for next year, and some, a little bit of graphical analysis. So, a school district has the authority, and has very little authority really, to levy taxes except by voter approval. Or majority of our tax levy is set by state formula, which means the legislators set the formula for us. We're not like the cities and the counties. We cannot set a levy and say, "This is what our levy will be for next year, and that's what guides us." It's, it's the legislature and voter approval that guides our levy and sets it for us. So really, it's our total authorized total levy minus our local property taxes, and the remainder is some sort of state aid. And it doesn't necessarily mean it's all one type. There's several different kinds of aid that we receive. So our factors impacting any tax change for our district are issues driven by the state-level decisions. So that would be legislators. So any additional levies determined by state formula, any changes in the sales ratio, which would impact our adjusted net tax capacity, and then any laws mandating some code compliance. So when the legislature changed the the ag credit, that will affect our adjusted net tax capacity and our referendum market value. So those things, when they make some adjustments, and anytime they make adjustments, it does impact on some decisions or some, some of our levy certification. So district voters, as you know, in 2017, the voters approved a bond referendum and an excess levy referendum. We haven't had one since then, so there isn't any change in that for our district at this time. And some other local factors. So as our district grows, that affects our levy. You'll see that as we look at some of our graphical analysis. Some property improvements not previously taxed. Again, with a growing district, we'll see that. Anybody who has made improvements on their property and they see a change in their market value, or if there's a change in classification. So what's included are the levies and bonds for any voter-approved referendum, those levies set by state aid, and anything that the, the local levy, the local authority has, such as reemployment, which we do levy for, safe schools, career and technical levy, facility leases, integration, Q-Comp, and our other post-employment benefits. So, we have seen some increases in our adjusted net tax capacity and referendum market values and our pupil units. So as you can see, as we have increased over these last several years in our adjusted net tax capacity and in our referendum market value. So, this is important to see this increase because as our, you'll see later on in the, in the presentation, our increase is a 1.24% increase this year in our, in the district's levy certification. So as we see these big growth numbers, most of the time, when you see these big growth numbers in our net tax capacity compared to what our increases in our levy, most people's taxes for school taxes only, I'm talking about here, you'll see them decrease because there's more property and more value to spread that 1.24% across. And if those go up, are going up six to eight percent in those areas, most people are going to see a decrease in their school taxes. And that's why it's important to continue to see that referendum and market value and adjusted net tax capacity going up. Our enrollment history trends, and we see this. You can see that we have still a growing district this year. It's not as much as we have seen in the past, but we are still a growing district. Our preliminary levy certification, this is kind of the breakout of all the different levy areas. And you can see there's a lot of different levy areas that we have to pay attention to and we have to decide whether we are levying for. The board typically, like the local optional aid, the equity levy, those kinds of things are all set by the legislature. Until we get down to the Q-Comp, that is something that the board decides to levy for. The reemployment levy, the safe schools levy, and the lease facilities, those are the ones the board really had some input on. The remainder of them, you really aren't seeing a big increase in there. I will point out the local optional. You'll see the $1.9 million increase there. And the levy referendums, the $1.7 million decrease, are offsetting a little bit. That is due to a legislative change as well. The legislature decided to take $300 off of our levy certi, off of the levy referendum, so of the $923. So for next school year, that 923 becomes 623. And the local optional, instead of it being $424, it is now $724. So that is a legislative change that you really didn't have much input on at the local level. But when the next time the district in 10 years asks for a renewal of this levy referendum, it would be at $623 instead of the 923 because of that change. And so those are, that's just the biggest difference in our, in this change for this levy certification. And that's the biggest change right now in that legislation. Otherwise, they're minor changes in the other areas. And you can see that overall, our general fund, there is a small decrease of a 0.25%. And if you look at our community service fund, we also levy in the community service fund and our debt service fund. Our community service fund has the biggest percentage increase. However, it's a small dollar amount because they have a small levy, overall levy amount. And so as a percentage, it's a large percentage, but the dollar is small. And then our debt service fund is going up 2.39%. So overall, it's a 1.24. We did see a decrease. If you look at the preliminary levy, and if you especially look at the debt service fund, you'll see that decrease there. And you'll also, well, that is the biggest decrease is, is in that area. So you'll see that, and that's mainly because our referendum, we decided to, what am I looking for? The word? We refinanced our bond. So you'll see that. And so you'll see that about $200 and some thousand dollars with the refinance of the bond and some facilities as well, leased facilities. So those two areas, we refinanced those. And originally, that the board had approved in September was a 1.88% increase in our levy certification, and it got reduced down to the 1.24 by the refinancing of those two areas. So here's our levy certification limitation analysis. So the majority of it is voter-approved for building bonds and operating referendums. You'll see that 14% is a local discretion and the remaining 25% is state-determined. And then this is our 10-year levy history. And you can see that we've had a long history of having low levy increases in the school district's levy, except the one year that we asked our voters for approval of additional operating referendum and additional money for building bonds to add to our district's building capacity. So otherwise, we have a longstanding history of low levy increases. And the one thing that we've talked about several times is that because we are different from the cities and counties right now, they're approving their final budgets for next year at, at their meetings in December. We are also going to review our budget this year, but it's the current year budget. And this levy affects next year's budget. So ours is a little off. And so it's hard to, we're required to talk about our budget, but the most of what we can talk about right now is our current year budget because we haven't set next year's budget yet, and we won't do that until June. And so we're certifying that now. That gets paid from January next calendar year. And our board will recognize that revenue from next July through the following year. So in the next school year. This is our revised budget that we're asking the board to approve at the meeting tonight as well. This is adjusted for the fewer students that we received this year. We are still a growing district again, but we did not have as many students enroll in our district as we anticipated. So we have less revenue on this. The one area that we are seeing an increase in revenue is in the safe schools. That is going up about $300,000 because we received some additional funding from the state for safe schools. And we are anticipating to spend the majority of that on, we've talked about this before, about radios, some additional radios, some additional cameras, and security for our district. And so those are the areas that we're spending those funds on. As we open our new buildings, we are getting the radios and things that are required to make sure that we can communicate throughout all our buildings. Sometimes with the brick walls and those things, we can't do that. So we need the repeaters in our buildings so that we can do that. As far as all other funds, our food service fund, we're expecting to spend some of that down because we're opening the new food service areas in several of our buildings. So they're getting some new equipment that they've been saving up for. And community ed, they have a slight increase in community ed. Our building fund, you'll see that as being spent down because as we finish up these projects, we're spending the majority of that money this year. We will have some spent in next school year as well. And our debt service, you can see that that's the amount that we pay annually for our debt service bonds. And we have a new custodial fund this year because of the student activity funds. And the other change this year is in the total, our OPEB fund. We are planning to spend about $320,000 out of that fund. Any questions about any of this information?
Anyone on the board have questions?
I have one question. It does, the, do the numbers and the estimated fund balances reflect changes in the contracts that we're going to be talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Stacy?
Just that percentage now on the revised general budget of the total, you know, the number we always went within.
11.15%.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it's within fund balance policy.
Yes.
Which is eight to 12.
Our fund balance policy is with eight to 12%. It's 11.15.
Yeah, okay. And then I just had one other, just kind of a comment that I wanted you, and I know you highlighted it. But on the local optional compared to the levy referendum, I mean, I noticed, I mean, I know people got their tax or estimates recently. And that was the one area, I think, anyone listening or the public can really see that there was a big swap of tax-approved to other levies. And, and that's where, I mean, I think people just need to take note is that, you know, some of these are voter-approved, and then some of them aren't. And that, to see that shift and what, and what's happening. And, I mean, I'll just put it out there. My value went up pretty well, and I still am paying less taxes than I was last year. So I think we do a really good job of, of managing growth. And that spreading it out really, I think, is appreciated in the fact that we have consistency for our taxpayers. So, thanks. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, then I believe we open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board? The tax levy? Okay. Then we'll move on to the community survey result. Oh, sorry. Can you come up here, please, and state your name? And where you live? City?
My name is Timothy Gary. I'm new in the Prior Lake. And I just wanted a copy of that PowerPoint if I can get it.
Yeah, it'll, yep. Is it on the website?
It'll be on our website.
Oh, it will be? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on to the community survey results with Peter Leatherman.
As Peter's making his way up, just a reminder that every two years about, we ask Morris Leatherman Company to come and do a community survey, survey for us. We do the annual student, staff, and parent surveys. The last time that we did this was January of 2018. So you're going to see some 18, 19 comparable data, but know that it is almost two years. So thanks for being here.
Wonderful. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. Just to remind everyone what we undertook for the district, and the methodology was the same over the past few surveys. When we're doing bond referendum, operating levy surveys, all that previous work, a little bit different of samples. But this time, we spoke with 400 randomly-selected residents across the district. That margin of error is plus or minus 5%. We then had 34% of, in that 400 sample, be parents. And so we called in additional roughly about 160 parents so that we then had a projectable cell size of at least 300. And with that, the margin of error is plus or minus 5.5%. The interviews were completed very end of October, first part of November. The average interview time was 17 minutes. Non-response rate was 4.5%. And we had approximately 55% that completed their interviews via appointment so that when it was convenient for them to take the survey, not when it was convenient for us to give the survey. A few demographics then. Cellphone-only households, almost a straight majority now, 48%. 10% still have landline only. And then the remaining percentage of 42% have both landline and cellphone. One of the changes that we're going to see, there, there's more enthusiasm for what's happening in the district. And it's borne out right away when we asked the importance and the quality of education and the decision to move to their current residence. And this change is from two, you know, basically two years. Now, the very important went up a statistically significant now, nine points to 51%. A flat majority of people are indicating that the quality of education in the Prior Lake Savage Area School Districts was very important in their decision to move to their current residence. 76% total are indicating that it was at least somewhat important to them. When people think about the district, what's the first thought that comes to mind? The first two items at 22%, and this is open-ended, they could tell us anything, are the good teachers and then the good education. One in seven, 14%, just said excellence across the board. 10% talked about good programs. And if we combine in the broad curriculum at 7%, you have about 17%, one in six people that are thinking of the programs and curriculum is the first thing they think. Then 9% mentioned growth. 8% mentioned high taxes, about half of what we typically see, large class sizes. But the key takeaway for about two-thirds is something positive focused on teachers, programs, or the academics in the classroom. A statistically significant change and very impressive from 2018 to 2019 is the overall favorability rating on the quality of education. Now, in 2018, 93% said it was either excellent or good. This time, 94%. That's not the change. The change is in the excellent, the enthusiastic rating. And Minnesotans are very difficult to get enthusiastic about anything. And to say something's excellent means that something's almost perfect. Because if you follow up with the good, those, half of them will say, "Well, good is good enough. You're never going to be excellent." So that 14-point jump is statistically significant. It's the high now in the district. It's also one of the top five excellent ratings that we have over the last two years. And just to give you context for what it is across the state, the norm excellent rating right now is 22%. What doesn't vary, you have always about 90% favorable. It's that excellent rating, that enthusiasm in the district. And it's very marked in this district at this point in time. Now, how is the district doing on meeting the learning needs of students? All students, most, only some, or very few. This went up to the high last time to 62%. And we didn't know if it would stabilize there or go back down. The 62% is very high. The norm on that is 45%. It is a stringent standard of all student learning needs being met. It maintained at 61%, very strong. In following up with those that said most, only some, or very few, the 35%, we asked, "Is there a certain type of student whose learning needs are not being met?" And that is what's arrayed in the upper right-hand portion of the chart. The focus for folks is basically average students at 18%. Now, that's 18% of 34%, about 5%, 6% of the community. Below average, special needs, and gifted and talented. Those were the only four that hit double digits. But it is following a trend that we see now across the state. There is more of a concern for the average to the below-average, underachieving, struggling students at this point in time than, say, 15, 20 years ago. What about quality over time? In 2019, those saying it's better is 30, is 30%. Those saying worse is 9%. We always look at a ratio on this one, positive to negative. Hopefully, it's positive to negative. There are those districts that have more people saying worse than better. You're better than three to one. And that is the norm, and this is about two to one. Now, you are down a bit in those saying better than 2017, or 2015, 2018. But what you have is more people saying excellent. And that, as you grow that excellent rating, it's really hard to move people. You now have the high of those saying it's about the same because it's excellent already, about 95% overlap. If they said excellent, it's about the same. It's not a bad thing. It's just, there's not a lot of direction to go. It really is a problem. Not really. Some specific perceptions. And for the purpose of this chart, it only went back to 2015. First off, does the district do a good job spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? You're now at the high. It has moved from 74 to 78 to 84%. Norm on that is 55% right now. An outstanding endorsement of spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently. Do they trust the district to do what's right for children? Never has been an issue here. Nine out of 10, this time 91%. And are they are proud and would recommend the schools to their friends and neighbors? Absolutely. It's now at 89%, right at that nine out of 10 range it has been through at over the past five years. What about, does the district do a good job of communicating with residents? And this is maintained, and it's maintained at a very solid 85%. 10 points higher than the norm of 75%. Just an outstanding rating. And this question I'll use as a prelude because it's a very important question in lieu of people's perception of property taxes in the district because of past the successful bond and operating levy. Are the schools a good value for the investment? Absolutely. That has not changed since 2015 at 91%. One question we did add this time around is, are they satisfied with the decision-making of the board and the administration? Absolutely. 7, 85% agree with that statement. Norm on that is approximately 70%. We then go into that parent balloon. And we asked parents, went through a long list, and read it to them, and asked, "Is it, is it very important, somewhat important, not to, or not at all important to you, these programs and services?" Well, first off, we have a sea of blue, which tells us everything is important. There's very little red across the chart. So for the purpose, I just combined the not to and not at all into a red, and then put the dark blue to create the hierarchy between very important and somewhat important. So what leads the list at very important for parents, almost two-thirds say the quality of teaching staff at 64% with 94% saying at least somewhat important. And there's tiers about, then you go into the 40% very important, the 30% very important, and then the 20% very important. But really, the key takeaway from this is this gives you a sense of priority. But the priority overall is everything's important. The lowest importance level you have is 75%. The highest you have is 94%. So at least three-quarters of parents find everything at least somewhat important to them. Some job performance ratings then. In looking back into 2012, on the school board, the administration, and teachers and instructional staff, the stability has always been there through the ups and the downs. And now, the school board is at 81% favorable to 13% unfavorable. The norm on that right now is 55 to 40, one and a half to one. This is better than six to one, an outstanding endorsement. The superintendent and administration, 81 to 10, eight to one. Norm on a superintendent and administration is two to one, positive to negative. And you can see that the results almost mirror each other between the school board and the administration. It shows in the minds of the community then, they, they see a cohesion between the governance and the administration. And then teachers and instructional staff, a, a little bit of a drop, still a little bit above the norm of 85%. Something to look at, dropping from 82 to 86%. They didn't all go into the negative. You still have less than 9% indicating unfavorable. But overall, very strong ratings. The financial management now is at the high. It was 6, 74%. We've gone to 77%. The norm on this is a flat 50% favorable rating. And there are many districts that are upside down having more people saying only fair or poor than excellent to good. Very strong endorsement, especially in lieu of the change in people's perceptions on taxes. Now, the light green portion of the chart shows the perception of total taxes, total property taxes. 55% say either very high or somewhat high. 38% said about average. The perception on total taxes is actually down two points on the high. It's still above 50%. Anytime a district goes over 50%, it's considered a hostile tax climate. There are very few non-hostile tax climates out there currently. But the change that has happened, and perfectly logical that with the successful bond referendum, the successful levy, people's perceptions on school taxes have changed. It actually went up 17 points to 59% saying very high or somewhat high. It's even then more striking to go back to the rating on the financial management now being at the high. And then also, one of those, that earlier question that I pointed to, keeping in mind that people's parameter for the investment made in the schools has changed. Because the statement is, "The schools are a good investment. I now think I'm paying more. Am I still getting a good investment?" And that hasn't changed in people's minds. All at the same time, it's important to just notice what the level of information people have is. Last time, 64% felt they were either very informed or somewhat informed. This time, 71% feel that way. About 10 points higher than the norm we typically see. And so more information is actually creating better results and better feelings in the district than we've seen in other districts where sometimes perhaps more information doesn't lead to more fondness, shall we say. So, those are the overall highlights of the survey that I presented in the work session. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Before we ask questions, just so the audience knows, we went over this in more detail about an hour ago in our work session. So there is more to, to see.[1717.01] And Kristy, will this be on the website as well, this information with a little more detail? So, does anyone have any other questions?
No, I just wanted to point out that you mentioned some of the interesting demographics behind some of the numbers and what was drawing them. I was wondering if for the purpose of the audience here, who wasn't, who were not part of the work session, if you could kind of elaborate on that just a touch.
Oh, there are so many interesting numbers. You know, and one of them was the chart that I didn't put up for the purpose of streamlining this presentation, but on people's want of, do they feel that they have enough information via print? And we actually had fourteen percent say they received too much, which was up from four percent and up from two percent and two percent. And looking at that specific group, okay, who said too much? It was eighteen to thirty-four-year-olds without children. It wasn't parents. It was those empty nesters, the young millennials are saying, I'm just receiving too much print. And so there are various interesting changes that will be noted in the results, in the report that we send out to the district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Can we move on to the consent agenda? These are items that are routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion. We have the financials, the check wire transfer dispersment summary for October, November, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking statements for October, November, bank reconciliation statement for October, building bond investment reports for October, November, monthly wire detail, October, November, monthly health, dental, and wire detail for October, November, monthly check detail for October, November, the monthly ACH detail for October, November, approval of school board minutes on November fourth, November eighteenth, and November twenty-sixth, when we had a special meeting, the personnel items as listed with resignations, the district retirement of Manuel Chavez, elementary head custodian, for fifteen years of service, thank you, the candidates for employment that are listed, and leaves of absence. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So made.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Enrique. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Next on our agenda is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. We have gifts this evening from the Prior Lake Touchdown Club, the Prior Lake Wrestling Club, Prior Lake High School Yearbook, Prior Lake High School Student Council, the Laker Athletic Booster Club, the Prior Lake Savage Optimists Club, Ms. Hizan, Mr. O'Hara, Wells Fargo Matching, Colleen Schmidt, CoBank, Mr. Dominic, Office Depot Give Back, and the Benevity Fund. While all of these donations are very well-accepted, very grateful for, there's a couple I just wanted to highlight, they're fairly significant donations, and they'll be going toward our new activity center to help with some of the equipment that's needed, and those are the Prior Lake Touchdown Club, the Prior Lake Wrestling Club, the Prior Lake High School Yearbook, and the Prior Lake High School Student Council, as well as the Laker Athletic Booster Club. So thank you very much, especially to them, it's significant contributions or donations. Jeff, did you have anything to add? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept these donations?
So made.
By Melissa, second.
So made.
Mary? This is a roll call, do you have any other comments? Sorry. This is a roll call vote. Michael?
Aye.
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 And that resolution passes seven-zero. Thank you. And now we'll move on to Laker Pride.
Good evening, everyone. I am very excited to continue good news that we've had a chance to celebrate this evening, first with the levy certification and then with the survey results. Tonight, we have an opportunity to really, I think, display and share We Are PLSAS, Relationships Matter. We're going to start tonight with Diana Forshell and several students and staff from Westwood Sage Laola de Lago. What Diana did is, she's done a couple things. First of all, she has built a couple choirs that have a hundred and fifty students, and with her elementary music team, she has brought ukuleles to the school and to the district. So this evening, we have a chance for our students to show some of their talents, which I'm really excited about, and I'm also really excited to see the talents of our staff who are modeling vulnerability and being wonderful learners as they play the ukuleles. So with that, Diana, if you'd bring your students and colleagues forward as we do some Laker showcasing this evening.
Teachers, can you all see?
Yeah.
And then microphone here.
Oh, microphone, do you have?
Oh, there's one right here.
We can use this one.
Right here.
Oh, perfect. Great.
Well, maybe we want to come over and watch.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure.
I will fight. I will fight for you. I always do until my heart is black and blue. And I will stay. I will stay with you. We'll make it through the other side like good friends do. I'll reach my hands out in the dark and wait for yours to interlock. I'll wait for you. I'll wait for you. Hold. I'll hold on to you. No matter what this world throw, it won't shake me loose. I will fight. I will fight for you. I always do until my heart is black and blue.
This was a big challenge. They've been playing a little bit less than two months.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
The teachers have been an awesome group. We've had a lot of fun, as you can probably see. And this was a big challenge when we said, hey, we're going to do a performance. So they've been playing a little bit less than two months, so it was a big, a big task to take on, but they have risen to the challenge, so. And thank you, students, so much for singing with us.
Thank you.
I think this is just a little bit of evidence. These amazing students and these amazing staff are why those survey results that you just saw around the quality teachers that we have are so high. Thank you.
Well, tonight, we have something really exciting, I think, for Prior Lake Savagery Schools. First, I want to, I have a couple recognitions. First, I'd like to bring Michael Nelson and Stacy Rell up here. Michael and Stacy completed the MSBA Leadership Development Program, which is accomplished by successfully attending the Leadership Workshop Series Phase One, Two, Three, and Four. I have certificates to present to you tonight. We want to thank you for your dedication and your time commitment to the district, and especially to the students of Prior Lake Savagery Schools. I know it takes a lot of time, it's volunteer, and we really do appreciate it, so thank you. I'm giving them back up here. Susan Bugginby about why she has some special feedback. It's my privilege this evening to present a very special recognition to Stacy. She was then selected as a member of the two thousand twenty All-State School Board. She didn't know about it till right now. Some of the qualifications for this award include MSBA for training and attendance at conferences and seminars, a high-level quality involvement in the district, dedication and involvement in the community, demonstrating an understanding of the key work of the school board and board governance, working in collaboration with other school board members, a strong commitment to public education as a whole, and a broad base of support that includes letters from the superintendent and from some of your fellow school board members. Stacy will be one of six other school board members who are being honored with this award throughout the state. She'll accept this award at the Minnesota School Board Convention, Leadership Conference, actually, at the Minneapolis Convention Center on Thursday, January sixteen. And joining us this evening is her family, and I may let Stacy introduce them if they want to come up for a second. But on behalf of the Prior Lake Savagery School Board, we want to introduce them. They don't want to come on?
Come on.
They're coming, they're coming.
I'm very honestly shocked. It's always, it's been an honor to serve. So this is my mom, Sandy, and my eldest daughter, Kennedy, my dad, Ed, and my husband, Dave, and Missy is me. Graduating from college, last one through, woo-hoo, on Friday.
She's watching online.
Oh, she. She's watching. Well, there, now I'm off the hook. Thank you for coming. And congratulations again. We look forward to the presentation in January. Thank you. It wasn't so bad. Forced retired, I thought it was forced retirement. Yeah, she was worried. We'll move on to personnel items. Jim Coram?
Board chair, board members, Superintendent Stallow. There is only one personnel item to present tonight, although it's a significant one. It's the PLSEA two thousand nineteen twenty-one contract. The negotiating teams did, I thought, did a great job. The bargaining unit has ratified it by a membership vote, and so we're requesting approval by the school board.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the collective bargaining unit agreement for the PLSEA?
So made.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Enrique. Any comments or questions?
Go ahead, Mary. Mary, you? Yes, first of all, I want to say that I appreciate the work that was done by everybody, the teachers, the staff in particular. This was a particularly long process, but were very worthwhile. I want to address my concern that the board just did get the complete contract just a few hours ago, and as a member of other boards, as well as in my normal capacity in my work life, I would normally not vote on a contract we just received a couple of hours ago. But I want to make it clear that I have no doubt that the content of the contract is exactly what the teachers wanted and everyone agreed to. The board was advised of some of the changes that were going on in the contract, as well as the items of contention, and provided input to it in order to help the process along. I am simply not comfortable voting on something I haven't had a chance to read in total.
Other comments?
I guess I'd also like to thank all those involved. It's a lot of time commitment and work to get to this point. And I would agree that the board has been kept informed through the process more this time than ever. Over fifteen years, I don't think we've had quite this much involvement as you went through the process, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Those were all in closed sessions, so you probably don't know about that, but we were kept up to speed. We were asked to have a special meeting to discuss some changes in parameters so that we could get a contract. We gave them the parameters, and when our team went to negotiate, they were able to get a contract within those parameters. We were notified of all of that last week. The full contract in the past has never been presented in its complete entirety to the board before we have voted. That doesn't mean that you can't come in and see the contract when it is finally finished and signed. And I appreciate, again, that you stayed within the parameters that we had set for you, and appreciate all the work that the teachers did to come to that agreement as well. Any other comments? Okay, I think I have a second, first and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. We'll move on to unfinished business.
I didn't vote.
Are you abstaining?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for an abstention. So that motion, I correct myself, that motion passes six-zero with one abstention. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business, facility planning and construction with Jim. This is a bid approval?
Bid approval and a quick construction update. Okay, so if we could reverse the order. I have before you, first of all, good evening, Chair Shemek, School Board Dr. Stallow. I have before you a recommendation to accept partial results of our bid day last, on the twenty-sixth of November. In your board packet, the letter asking for was dated wrong from last year sometime, so I appreciate your patience on that. So I am looking for an approval of bids for WorkScope One, CM Construction Company, in the amount of two million one hundred and forty-four thousand. WorkScope Two, Food Service, Stafford Smith Incorporated, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand one oh three. WorkScope Three, Fire Protection, Summit Companies, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. WorkScope Four, Plumbing, Ryan Mechanical, one million two hundred and fourteen thousand. WorkScope Five is HVAC ventilation to SCR, nine hundred and eight thousand dollars. WorkScope Eight, Electrical Communications and Fire Alarm, AJ Mar Electric, in the amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand. Asphalt paving to Minnesota Roadways, two hundred and three thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars. And WorkScope Ten, Roofing, to Flynn Midwest, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars. We did have a few concerns. One was on the electrical bid. The electrician did not acknowledge start and stop time schedule. After checking with our council, it's not material to the bid, and so they did follow up with correspondence in that they do acknowledge that. WorkScope Six, HVAC controls. Again, we're reviewing that, so we're not bringing that WorkScope Four this evening. No bids were received for WorkScope Seven, testing. No bids were received for WorkScope Seven, testing, adjusting, and balancing. So we will work at getting that cleaned up in the next weeks and ask for a quote, because it will fall underneath the threshold for bidding. And the low bid on asphalt is, Patrimon's Roadways pulled their bid, and so we would like the next rated, or the next apparent be approved. And with that, total amount of dollars for the bids awarded tonight would be $6,089,418. And with that, I may will be looking for a recommend, or an approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the bids is described by Jim.
So made.
By Stacy, yeah, by Stacy, second by Mary.
Mary?
Any comments or questions?
Jim, could you just confirm if we're still within budget for the estimate that we had for the initial bid packages?
We're very close to budget.
Are we over, under?
Might be over a little bit. But we're in good shape.
Okay. Did the pull of that one bid cause us to be over and go with the second highest bid? Or second lowest bid, I'm sorry?
You know, honestly, Mary, I don't have that.
You don't have that?
I can get that for you.
Stacy, did you have something?
I was going to ask that question.
That question, okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And there is no presentation this evening. I could do a verbal update on construction. We are moving along. High school's coming together. We got a roof on the activity center. Parking lot's done. We're still working on Twin Oaks, Hidden Oaks. We're starting to get, we'll be occupying that building very shortly, and high school continues, so it's a lot of exciting work for us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll move on now to the new business, World's Best Workforce Report approval, hopefully.
Hi, because I'm new, do I have to pull that up, or like, it's already part of? Thank you for the technical assistance. While I have some technical assistance, good evening, Superintendent Stallow, Chair Schimmick, and the Board of Directors. And I should have watched so that I could do that next time on my own. Thanks so much. As you might recall from a study session earlier in the fall, this is just a summary of the World's Best Workforce Report. This is the final version. This has gone through the Advisory Committee, and so this is just a brief review. You'll remember, the World's Best Workforce Report is something that goes to the Minnesota Department of Education, and the whole thing is built on the growth that students experience while they're in our schools. So we start out making sure our students are ready for kindergarten. We build on that to make sure our students are reading on grade level by third grade. We look at gaps that we have and find ways to close them. We make sure our students are college and career-ready, and we're looking to find ways to make sure that all of our students can graduate. So all those build on each other. And so I'm here this evening to report on some of those marks as we go along. So the kindergarten readiness benchmark is a literacy composite, so that means students, as they enter kindergarten, have some literacy tests, and this is a composite of those scores together. And this shows you some comparisons of all the kindergarten students that we have that start kindergarten with us in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. And 45% of those students, as they came in, showed with their test scores that they were on track to be at grade level by the end of the school year as well. And then I compared that to students who had attended the Circle of Friends preschool, so our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools preschool, and those students showed up a little bit higher, 47% of students hitting that kindergarten benchmark. And just to give some general metro area context, like, in the high, mid, mid to high 30s, low 40s might be something that you would see elsewhere. So that's looking really good for Prior Lake.
And Chris Lind, just a point thing that you said in the Curriculum Committee, the 45 and 47% were not mutually exclusive for Circle of Friends.
That's right, so all the kindergarten students also includes those who attended Circle of Friends, and then taking just Circle of Friends students out, that's a 47, that's right. All right, that second marker is all third-grade students reading at grade level. And here, we can see some variation up and down. And then we can also see what that looks like at a statewide level over the last four years. So a slight decrease at the state, and even with a slight fluctuation, so it's really holding steady in Prior Lake. That next goal set out, and the marker that we report to MDE is about closing gaps. And so what I've done here is taken all math scores from the MCA for the district, so that's grades three through eight and 11. And then I've shown a number of different types of gaps. So the first one here is the gap between students who are eligible to receive free reduced-price lunches and those who are not. And so we can see that gap is widening ever so slightly over time. And we have some decreases for both groups there. If we look at the difference between students of color and white students, that gap also is widening just ever so slightly with a slight decrease there. I will also note that, remember I said it was grades three through eight and 11 taking this test? In grade 11, we did have a significant percentage of test refusals, and so that shows up in here too. This is a comparison of students who are receiving special education services and those who are not. We see, it's a little bit of variation up and down in there, but overall, we're sustaining those gaps. And our gaps between EL students and those not receiving EL services is widening again, a bit. Again, just something to take into consideration is the students receiving EL services varies from year to year. And so students at a point where they become proficient in English to a certain point are no longer in that group of students receiving EL services. And a note too, that even though we're looking at math scores, it is also a test of a student's English language ability. All right, that next marker is students being ready for college and career. And in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, we offer many opportunities for students to be really ready for college and career, all sorts of different ways, from college-in-the-schools classes, AP classes. We have opportunities at MinCaps. And then also, students might be taking classes at a local community college. And there are some other assessment opportunities that students have, like the ASVAB for students that might be interested in the military, and Accuplacer too, and of course, the ACT. And so we're going to look at our ACT average composite scores over time. So very incredibly, the scores have been exactly stable at 22.8. So the ACT is on a scale to 36. 36 is the highest a student can achieve. And we want to work toward that goal of a 25 is our average. All 11th graders take the test, or nearly all 11th graders, there are very few who opt out or refuse. I wanted to also relate this back to the closing of different gaps. And so just to give another way to look at some of the opportunities for students. So in the ACT last year, these are the average scores of different student groups. So you can see our black student group had the lowest average scores. And there was a group of students who did not respond, so we don't have information on some students. But our students who report two or more races, being Asian or white, are performing the highest, and that does mirror our other test scores from the MCA. And then another opportunity for students is to be college and career-ready is to take some classes where that, when they finish high school, they've already got some credit. This is a graph of our AP course enrollment, and it compares different student groups, and shows the percentage of students that are enrolled in our schools in general, that's in light blue, and then the percentage of students in AP classes. And we are not too far off, so there's a little bit of disparity in Latino and black groups. You can see the percentage of the enrollment is a little bit higher than their enrollment in the AP classes, but it's just a percentage point or two off. So we are pretty close. I think that's a place we can make progress quickly. Another marker for being college and career-ready is in 10th grade when students take the MCA math. No, 10th grade when they take the MCA reading test, or 11th grade when they take the MCA math. Just below that cut score that shows that a student has met proficiency, that gains a student access to regular, like, credit-bearing courses at Minnesota State Colleges and Universities. So that means they don't need to take any type of remedial class. And again, about a quarter of the students did not test. Even with that quarter not having tested, 70% of them, or about 70%, would not need any remedial work. Of course, we want to reach a point where none of our students would need any remedial work as they leave our high school. And then this is reading at the 10th grade level. Again, like, around 20% of our students did not take the test. But of those that did, about 60% are at the place that they would not need any remedial work as they go on to college. District-wide, our four-year graduation rate, that's our last marker, is all students graduating, has fluctuated just a bit over the past couple of years. You'll see that 2018 is the last year noted, and that's because our graduation rates are reported the following year. And so we have students that still might be graduating into September, and those count as part of our official graduation rate. And the numbers aren't released publicly until later in the school year. If you look at the different graduation rates of different racial and ethnic groups, we can see, again, some of those gaps that we're working to close, certainly earlier on than graduation. And we can also isolate just our Prior Lake High School graduation rate, and we can see that rate increasing over the last number of years, and then just a slight decrease the past year. So that's also looking really good, especially in comparison to other similar school districts and high schools. Part of the World's Best Workforce Report also requires some other information about our school district and some of the steps we're taking for improvement. We have school continuous improvement plans in every school. School leadership teams, building instructional leadership teams, go through a strategic planning process where they look at data and understand their current reality, and they spend time looking at research-based actions to get them to their desired future and goals. Those goals changed this year. And instead of being just a year-to-year annual goal, they are a goal set out three years, so 2022, for reading, math, and science scores to show 80% proficiency for all students. Those, or that 80% score or goal came from a few places. One is other metro area districts that have similar demographics. And the other is our MTSS system, our multi-tiered systems of support, where when we have a differentiated, rigorous core curriculum, we're meeting the needs of 80% of our students, and 80% of our students can show that they're meeting these state standards. We've got the high school graduation rate will reach at least 90% for all student groups, and increase overall to at least 97.5% by 2022. Sites had student engagement goals as well as recycling goals, in line with our EastM initiatives within the district. Just to give you an idea of what those look like at the school level, so there's that 80% goal by 2022. And then every student group has an incremental goal to reach that 80%. And this is just an example, not any school in particular. Again, that process that building instructional leadership teams went through is a root cause analysis to identify what some of the issues, or what a root cause issue might be, so that their action steps can actually be meaningful and really get at what might be causing some problems. So building leaders went through that process, identified root causes, and then used those to really fuel their action planning. They chose some progress monitoring tools to monitor their school continuous improvement plans throughout the year. And they'll be, they're already looking at those. And especially, an important part, or an important point will be in the middle of the year, after some more benchmarking, that's second winter map and winter aims web plus. So that's a benchmarking tool in literacy and math. Will be looked at at that point to see what the progress looks like. And this is a visual to show alignment, that there's not only the district goals and the school-level goals, but also the learning team goals, teams of teachers at the schools, as well as individual goals, all working toward that 80% proficiency goal. But it also means that teachers and teacher teams are really using their own assessments that they have for their units that they're teaching, and sharing out what is working well for groups of students, what might need some help. And teachers being able to exchange ideas back and forth to help their students succeed, really taking advantage of that cycle of continuous improvement, planning, assessing, making some analysis on that, and implementing some positive changes. Then, just in summary, we've got some areas for growth. One of those is disproportionality that you saw a few times. We do have some really great student achievement that you also saw. And lastly, although we don't have the video here, there's some really great information about the student experience that students reported out. And I think you saw some of that tonight, too, in the survey earlier. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I have one.
Jonathan?
Chris Lynn, you mentioned frequently test refusals, and I know that that's a growing trend. How does that impact the data? What's your impression of how that impacts what we see?
Sure, so the test refusals are really negligible until the 10th grade reading and 11th grade math, MCA scores come in. Like I said, about 20% of the students in 10th grade did not test, and about 25% in math in 11th grade did not. And that impacted those overall scores negatively, because if we look at the grade point averages of the students who did not test, as well as their prior scores, and students' prior year score is actually one of the best predictors of their next year following score. The majority of those students did meet or exceed proficiency, and so that impacts that total score in a negative way.
Unfortunate.
Is there, like, a reason why? They just cannot?
Yeah, actually, so we did some interviews with students to find out why. And we interviewed some who did take the test and some who didn't. And a recurring theme was that students decided that that was a day they would prefer not to spend at school. So if they, especially the current situation is 11th graders are taking the ACT, and 10th graders take the reading test on that day. And 10th graders reported that when they found out that it's not mandated to take the test, they decided not to come in and instead have the day to themselves. The setup is different in 11th grade, however. So 11th graders do take the MCA, or like, there's testing time allotted during the school day in different ways. But their responses were similar, that, you know, they'd rather not take the test. In 11th grade, students didn't find great meaning, because they would have just taken the ACT, which was going to be something that was going to make some college decisions for them.
I know the legislature, I think, is talking about this quite a bit, because it's kind of a waste of money if it's not, I mean, in my opinion, not inaccurate, or we're requiring kids and we're being held responsible for things that people can opt out, or kids can opt out of. I mean, I understand, but it's just when we're held accountable and it hurts your scores, it's not a true, you know, true look at the district then, so. I think it's unfortunate. I think it's something that maybe we should be talking about to our legislatures. Any other comments?
I do believe that the MCA is an important assessment benchmark, because it is a common denominator across the state. But how do we compare to other, particularly southwest metro districts, on the percentage of opt-outs?
Oh, that's a great question. That really varies literally from district to district. So like, some districts that are not dissimilar to us are still having above 90% of the students test. Others are barely getting to, like, test, others are barely getting to like 40%, so it really depends on the particular school and district. There's not a, it's not a super clear.
Is it a communication with the school to the parents? Because we do hear a lot of parents joining together and saying, why should I even have my kid go to school that day and, you know, and all that, particularly as they get to high school? So is it a communication about the benefit, the worth? Is there something that, you know, you can see from the patterns of who gets the higher percentage opt-in for that particular test?
That's also like pretty interesting and varied. There are school districts that like attach some incentive to testing, and you know, that's debatable of if, like what the effects of that might be. And there are others where it's a student-led initiative for, for everyone to not test. Yeah, just really varied.
Any other questions?
I'll make one comment. Just this Saturday, we had the Minnesota School Board Association got together to talk about resolutions to put forward for working with our legislators and legislators, and one of those was, especially in 11th grade, to allow students to take ACT or a comparable exam in place of the MCA because that's where their attention is going. So we'll see what they do with it.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Do I have a motion to approve the report or accept the report?
Go ahead.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Mary. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Moving on to the district budget enrollment and long-range planning. This is Julie and Jeff. Julie, you're back.
Really, you heard the levy certification, truth and taxation hearing increases a 1.24% and that's what we're asking the board to approve tonight.
Do I have a motion to adopt the 2019 payable 2020, 20, well, 2020 final levy certification?
So moved.
By Jonathan, second.
Second.
By Michael. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
And also included in that was the final budget for this year. I think the unassigned fund balance was at 11.14%, and so that was the in-fund balance policy.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve the final 2019-20 budget?
So moved.
By Jonathan, second. By Michael, is that okay? Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next on our agenda, thank you, next on our agenda is open enrollment for 2020-21. We did discuss this at three work sessions, I believe, and tonight we do have a resolution that we're considering for approval. Go ahead, Jeff. I just said it, sorry.
Perfectly. I, I do want to commend, the only thing I would say is, I do want to commend the work as a board that you have done digging into this topic of open enrollment. Certainly, this has not been a new topic of conversation for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools School Board, but really discussing open enrollment relative to our post-construction capacity. It's been over the past several months, at least three work sessions. I do want to, on behalf of Dr. Stallow, and I do want to commend you all on your work on this because this does go hand in hand with the budget presentation and the information you just approved earlier this evening because it's all about enrollment. And so with that, the resolution is being presented for board consideration.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution as stated in our board packet?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
Jonathan, any comments or questions, discussion?
I'll start off. So we're, we're, the total is 410, and we're asking for open enrollment at kindergarten for 120 grades one through five and 30 grades six through 12. There's a couple of things that I think are important for people to, to understand. One, we are opening up Hamilton Ridge with five sections in each grade level, and we have to fill that. The other thing is, is that, of course, we're going to be spreading it out across the districts, and we need to fill in the extra, extra seats. However, I think we did also talk about the study session, at the study session, for those people who weren't there, at least, at least this is what I heard. We, we can't be codependent upon open enrollment to sustain us going forward, but we do need the boost to fill the extra spots. There's no doubt, and we have to monitor it very, very closely. And I, and I appreciate the fact that the administration developed a capacity plan where we looked at the average kids per classroom, and we came to that satisfaction of just how, what the gap would be based upon the current demographics. However, again, you know, going into this, we had, we had some challenges with managing that process, and, and we ended up, you know, after the fact, kind of, you know, shutting down open enrollment in order to maintain, you know, the, the crowding situation and the, and the status of the number of kids in the schools so that it was somewhat manageable. We could run in that, run into that situation again, and hopefully we will stay diligent in that process and not have that happen, particularly with the new process that we've set forward to manage it by actual capacity and make sure that we're understanding the capacity at different grade levels to make it so that educational outcomes do not suffer.
Thank you, thank you, Lee. So we talked at length, three different study sessions about the fact that we are a growing district. Historically, just two years ago, we passed a referendum needed to add space because we're busting at the seams and art on the cart and so on and so forth. But our first priority is always resident students and students that are already here, that are already outside of Prior Lake and Savage, that are already now Lakers. And when we allow more than what we've done in the past, we've been very generous in offering 75 kindergarten spots and 1%, which is state mandated for each of the grades, but by adding so many spots, whether or not they get filled is another thing, but to get that revenue by this mechanism, when our first priority is always the folks that are already here, we just, six months ago, asked hundreds of families to leave a neighborhood school situation. So they lost their neighborhood school, and now we're asking new folks to come into the community. There are ways that we can get revenue, this is one of them, this is a revenue lever, but the other way is tightening our belts and living within our means as opposed to opening the floodgates to folks outside of our district. So right now, we've already got one in eight that are open enrolled. It's irrational to make a decision to expand more than what we've done in the past years. So the resolution, as it stands now, is not acceptable from what I hear in our community.
Michael?
I'll just repeat, too, what I was saying at the study session, and that is, we have been busting at the seams, I recognize that. And in looking back at when the board and referendum committee went to the taxpayers and said, would you support growth? They said, yes, if you plan capacity far enough out so that you don't have to come back to taxpayers quickly for more. So in other words, build more capacity than we will need next year or the year after, and follow the trends so that five, seven, maybe even 10 years out, we can meet the resident growth in our community. To do that, that means there have to be vacant seats this year and vacant seats next year, and there's a certain amount of fiscal responsibility that comes along with saying, let's meet open enrollment needs, fill those seats until we get to resident growth capacity. And as Mary pointed out, to stay in close contact with the admin team to manage this and to not end up in a situation where we're busting at the seams again, but to not take, to not use those years as we build resident growth, I think, would be a fault, failing on our part as a school board, so.
Anyone else? Jonathan?
I, I'll go back to something I say a lot when we talk about open enrollment. In this state, open enrollment is our version of school choice. Personally, I believe in that as a, that our public schools should allow people to have that choice, and as one of them, I think we need to be participating in a responsible manner. So I, too, want to send, extend an appreciation to administration and my fellow board members for all the work that was done in this process. Mary, I appreciate your persistence in requesting a capacity plan, and I think that was helpful for all of us, that when we're able to see the tables and the numbers and what we can accommodate, it makes it easier to make those decisions. For me personally, being able to hear what we have for the cohort growth, what we have in growth from a class to a class, from kindergarten to fifth grade, and then understanding how that's going to affect where we're going to be in five years with that class allows me to be able to see that we, what we have space for, I'm comfortable with these numbers. I do believe it needs to be an annual conversation. We'll look at it every year and manage it closely. I, personally, I think this is a fiscally responsible way to manage open enrollment.
I guess I'll make a couple of comments. I don't have a lot to say. I think, you know, I think, I think, I will say, I'll echo a little bit about Jonathan's then, I think as a board, we did this process really well. I think the discussion that we had over the last three study sessions and, and board meetings was very productive. I think, you know, everyone's got different opinions, and I appreciate administration really working with us and letting us dive in to, you know, different scenarios because it makes the process and the decision a better one. And in my, and for me, it's a little bit easier knowing that we've, we've looked at all different avenues. I do think, like Jonathan said, this is Minnesota's answer to school choice is open enrollment, that no, no family should be subject to just where their zip code is. So I am a strong believer in open enrollment to allow people to go to school where they want to, and I think, given the fact that the community did, we did approve the referendum and get that space for the foreseeable future, it is fiscally responsible to run the buildings efficiently and not have a lot, you know, to run them, and we use this as a tool to just be able to have those efficiencies with class sizes, individual teachers, and every year that I've been on the board for the last 10 years, it's been used really as a tool to do that. So I think this is a, a good compromise and a, a good solution going forward.
Enrique, did you have anything to add?
Sure. I would say historically, the school has been kind of on the lead, or the district, rather, has been on the leading edge of making improvements to the, to the district so that we have enough space for the students to manage the growth, so leading that trend. We fell behind a little bit with a couple of failed referendums, and we felt that pain, we felt that burden. Our students felt it, the community felt it, our teachers felt it. We talked about all the specials on the carts and overcrowding class size and, and just the added stress that comes with that. So now we're progressing back responsibly in terms of planning for the growth, planning and trying to forecast as much as possible any sort of new developments that happen so that we can be ahead of that curve. And yes, open enrollment is one of those levers, but it is just one of the many levers that we can utilize to grow responsibly within the district, manage the funds that our taxpayers charge us with, so that we are faithful stewards of their, their funds and their trust, and as the survey shows, they believe that we are. We just have to remain steadfast in that front, and as an old professor of mine was fond of telling me, the goldfish only grows as big as the bowl that it's in. So we built a fairly sizable bowl, and we're allowing our goldfish to grow.
Sorry. You mean carp, but that's okay. I. Dr. Stallow?
I want to echo. Thank you. I want to echo Jeff's appreciation on both of the board members and the healthy and robust dialogues and conversations that we had over the last couple of months. I also want to thank my team, especially Jeff and Julie, for the work that they put into building both the capacity and the financial models for us to be able to take a look at. I also want to remind our public and the board that, as Jonathan and Stacy talked about, that open enrollment is Minnesota's choice program. We also have a lot of resident students who choose to leave Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. You know, we saw the data, we know a lot of people who attend here, most people who attend here, it's incredibly favorable experience for them. But I just want to remind people of that, that just as, as we accept open enrolled students where we have capacity and ability to do so, we also have many resident students who leave. Actually, up until Julie, six years ago, seven years ago?
2014.
2014 was, thank you, was the first time that we became net winners. Up until then, we had more students leaving the district because of open enrollment than coming to us. So I think it's definitely something we will continue to monitor, and we want to continue to monitor and be responsible. I also know that most districts would be incredibly envious of being net winners, and we just have to determine what is that healthy margin that we continue to pay attention to, and hopefully, as we continue to, to do a great job with our schools, more of our resident students will also choose to stay at the, in the district. So, thank you.
I'm not sure I have much more to add to what all the board members have said. I appreciate all of your perspectives. It has been a lot of discussion. It's not an easy decision to make. We want to do the right thing and make sure that we can fill the spaces, and yes, we are, want to be responsible to our taxpayers and be fiscal about it, but we also want to do what's best for kids. And sometimes best for kids means filling the classroom to the right number rather than having too large of classes and not being able to afford to split that class and becoming too small of classes. So open enrollment does help us with that, and that's exciting to me that we could be able to do this. And also that I know that our administrators will keep us informed of open enrollment coming in, resident students coming in as we go forward into the next school year. So I'm comfortable with this. I will read the resolution, at least the main part of it for the public. It's a resolution relating to open enrollment. Be it therefore resolved, that open enrollment guidelines are as follows. Limit open enrollment to 100 students in kindergarten for the 2021 school year. Limit open enrollment to 20 new students in each grade level, one through five, and limit open enrollment to 30 new students in grades, in grade levels six through 12 or a cumulative of 90 students at the middle school and 120 students at Prior Lake High School. I believe I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
It's roll call.
Oh, it is roll call, I'm sorry. Thank you for the reminder. Michael?
Aye.
Nay.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Stacy? Aye. Aye? Aye. That resolution passes six, one. Right? Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to new course approval, and I believe that's you again, Jeff.
Yes, it is. In your board packet, we have before you a new course approval that has come through Prior Lake High School and the Curriculum Advisory Committee for sign language, for another, American Sign Language Four, ASL Four. It is the next course in our sequence of American Sign Language offerings for students, a very popular course, and the interest is certainly high by students. And so you see the outline, we're seeking board approval tonight so that we can put it in registration guide and actively seek student registrations for this. Please know that as we move forward, the course is only developed and implemented pending adequate student enrollment in that course for the next school year.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the new course of American Sign Language Four? By Stacy, second. By Mary. Any comments or questions?
I'm just gonna.
Stacy?
Do we feel like it's going to be, I mean, don't.
This is a very popular course.
I mean, it's a transition, I'm guessing that we have a good clue that it might take off. Okay, good, great.
This was discussed at curriculum committee, and it is, it's, there's demand.
Yes.
Okay. We had a very large, as a matter of fact, isn't it one of the fastest-growing language courses?
At school. Correct.
Did that on purpose?
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You said.
You said aye, Eric?
I signed my aye, but yes.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Oh gosh, you guys, I can't do that. Move on now to the 2020 Prior Lake Savage Area Schools Legislative Platform. Dr. Stallow and Legislative Committee.
Over the last several months, the Legislative and Community Engagement Committee has gotten together, we've reviewed multiple different organizational priorities as we, as we creep toward the next legislative session. And while we know that this is not a funding year, but more of a policy year, we determined that it was still important to maintain a focus on some of the financial funding as a way to continue to educate our legislators as well as our community at large. And I think the platform before us represents some of those priorities. Members of the committee, other things that you'd like to share?
No, I think we had a good discussion on this, on the, like you said, on the study session. So I think this, you know, has some wording changes that were requested and, yeah, I think, you know, I did read something yesterday that there, you know, both sides are talking about giving some money for safe schools already starting. So I mean, I think it's kind of encouraging for, for some of this stuff, so hopefully we can get in there.
Can I ask a question with that? When they give money, is this like a one-time thing or is this going to be a continuous thing?
Well, that's what we get to ask them.
Okay, good.
I think part of the goal is, is working and advocating for making that additional 30 million that they added, making that permanent.
Hence a legislative platform for us.
And I'll just add to that, this weekend at the delegate assembly, that was a large topic of discussion among other school board members and they are really pushing for sustained funding for all areas through the state instead of the piecemeal grants.
As we all know with the grants, it's very difficult, we can't get staffing aligned to that. And one of the things we've talked about so much, especially with our new strategic direction, is that as we look at safe schools, it is the physical additions and enhancements that we've added, it's also staffing and other resources to help with the social emotional learning. So that would definitely help us in both areas.
I'll make a motion.
Stacy, second.
Second.
Enrique? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next on the agenda is the approval of a combined polling place resolution. The resolution established combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections, not held on the day of a statewide election. I believe this is something that we have to do on an annual basis, whether it applies to us or not. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So made.
By Mary, second.
Second.
By Michael, any comments or questions? This is also a roll call vote. Michael?
Aye.
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 That resolution passes seven zero, thank you. Finally, we're to policy. These are the second and final readings of two of our policies under governance. Policy 210, conflict of interest, there are no changes, it's consistent with MSBA. And policy 214, which is out-of-state travel by school board members, again, no changes and consistent with MSBA. Are we willing to take this as one motion?
Sure.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve these policies? Who said that, I'm sorry?
Melissa.
Melissa, second. And second by Stacy, any further comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Administrative reports, Dr. Stallow.
Thank you, at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And tonight, I'd like to share some of the work in which we've been engaged to achieve that mission, in addition to the many things that you've already heard and seen this evening. Elementary principals hosted a kindergarten information session at Greenwood Elementary on November 25th. It was well-attended and designed to give parents information about our two different kindergarten options, our traditional kindergarten and our Spanish immersion at Laola de Lago. It also gave us a chance to let parents know that the online enrollment would open on January 26th and principals were also available to answer questions to parents. This continues to be a valuable meeting that helps give a chance for those personal connections to be made early with parents. Bridges Area Learning Center received a Rotary Foundation Award from Rotary International, a certificate of appreciation. Coordinator Dave Brown and teachers David Lawson and Alexis Sarafayas represented Bridges and accepted the award from the Prior Lake Rotary Club on November 26th. This award is presented to organizations that embody the spirit of Rotary and service above self through their contribution to our community, to our nation and our world. And that was certainly incredibly deserving. And finally, 28 junior and senior business students at Prior Lake High School have been inducted into Prior Lake High School chapter of the National Business Honor Society. The National Business Education Association developed the National Business Honor Society as a way to recognize and honor students' academic achievement. And membership is based on academic achievement in business classes and overall character, leadership and service. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any administrative reports? Jeff doesn't want to come up here again. We'll move on to board reports, these are considered to be brief and involve the committees that you've been attending since we last met. We'll start with Michael.
Community Education Committee met last week and we have two new advisory members and they're continuing partnerships and expanding their partnership roles. Early childhood meets next week as well and Dr. Stallow presented at the most recent meeting before that. And those are my only committee reports.
Southwest Metro, no, nothing related to report.
Bennett, there's always exciting, exciting flirt meetings that Jim runs, he keeps us engaged and entertained for, with all the tails from the construction trail. Curriculum Committee met right before this meeting. I think Mary would share my, I don't know, dismay once again at our ratios. We had a presentation by the middle school guidance counselors and their task, that is a mountain, that I don't know how they do it with the number of students that they serve. So another reminder that hopefully the state can find us some money for social and emotional learning. And I'm looking forward to seeing all my Westwood pals on Friday.
Stacy?
Nothing to report.
Mary?
So with the curriculum committee, obviously what Jonathan said is we went through Counsel on Social Services as well as college and career planning, it was sobering. And also something that we definitely need to focus on, we also got a brief review of the Gifted and Talented Program, which was enlightening in how it goes and the intersection between the elementary, middle school and high school. The week before that, we also received another detailed report as well as discussion on the, on the testing scores, our MAP scores, the SIP and, and everything else. And again, that was also sobering because we have challenges that we will never meet our goals, but, but we do definitely have challenges on that gap. So, Bint, Biztown Interviews with Michael, that was a lot of fun at Jeffers Pond and then Mincaps made their, they're going into their projects this week. So going into their business projects, so that'll be really exciting as they take on their role in new businesses and project management.
Enrique?
You need to report?
And we have student council.
Yes, so I'm happy to announce that we have a lot of things going on in student council as of the last few months. At the end of October, we did our annual trunk or treat with NHS, where we go out on Halloween and trick or treat for canned goods. Although we get offered a lot of candy, we usually turn it away because we have enough that we carry. And we were able to collect 1,868 pounds of food for the local captive agency. So that was really exciting, that's been pretty high, we usually get into the upper thousand, so we were happy about that. Throughout the month of November, student council, the Special Events Committee, we organized a friendly competition to go along with No Shave November. And this year, we raised almost $8,200 and that went for the epilepsy foundation. And last year, we only raised about $5,000, which I shouldn't have said only because that is a lot. And this has been progressively increasing, you know, a lot over the past couple of years. And our first place winner was Mr. Han, our choir teacher, and he raised $4,000 from all of his students and they had to cut off one of the hours because they were just pulling out all of the money from their wallet. So very, very giving and we were very happy and very proud of all of the work that the school did. And so that was very exciting. Also, in November, student council had our annual day of planning at the St. Michael's Coffee House and Dr. Stallow was able to join us and give some good leadership advice. And we went about the day talking about our winter dance and planning the changes that we want to make and just getting ready for the rest of the year. And it's kind of the nice kickoff, we have our new members who we gained in middle of October through honorary members, so they had a fun time. And then we also made tie blankets for a women's advocates organization in the cities, so we were very happy to do that. And as of tonight, hopefully they are inside and nice and warm now. NHS and student council are caroling for Build a Hand, which is an NHS committee that donates to this organization where they build prosthetic hands for those born without them or lost, or who lost in mining accidents across overseas. And so we've got that going, we've also got boughing for the Salvation Army, so we are very busy this holiday season.
I guess I just wanted to mention, we had American Education Week, seems like it was a long time ago, but I don't think there's been a meeting since then. And just want to thank all the board members that went to the schools. I know that I went toward the end of the week and there was a lot of teachers and staff that were appreciative of us being there and, of course, they all love the pumpkin bars. So I don't know if it's really more the pumpkin bars or us, but either way, they, they enjoyed it, so thank you all for going. Future events, on December 23rd to January 1st is winter break. Our next, our classes resume January 2nd and our next meeting will be the organization meeting on January 13th, followed by a regular meeting on January 13th. Just want to give you guys all a heads up to the MSBA leadership registration is coming up. The conference is January 16th to the 17th at the Minneapolis Convention Center and we'll have a special honor that we'll all be able to witness. There's no registration fee for it, but if you'd like to go to one of the early bird sessions or some of the other sessions that are included with workshops, please let Martha know. And if you could let Martha know if you're even going at all to, it helps for numbers. And with no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second. Second by Melissa. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero, we are adjourned.